Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, March 12, 2015, regular session of the Xenia City Council. We've been meeting since about 6:00 this evening discussing the Play Xenia initiative and looking at a number of proposals for park development and redevelopment within the city. We should be seeing some very exciting things with our parks over the next several years based on the city staff's excellent planning. As we begin this meeting this evening, we will have an invocation by Ms. Joanne Tarver, followed by the pledge led by Councilman Lauterback. If you would please rise with me for the invocation and pledge, please.
Let us pray. Dear gracious Father, Lord God, we just thank you, Lord God. We thank you for the opportunity to come into your presence, Lord God. And, Lord, we ask you, God, just to lift up the council, Lord God. We ask you, God, to direct them, Lord God. For you said, "Seek ye first the King of God and all of your righteousness," Lord God. We're seeking to you today, Lord God. Be our director, be our lead, be our guide. Touch each and every council member. In the master's name of the Lord Jesus Christ, I pray in Jesus' name.
Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tarver and Councilman Lauterback. May I have roll call, please?
Vice President Long.
Here.
Councilman Kow.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilwoman Mills.
Mr. President.
Mayor Bayless.
Here.
President Engel.
Here.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to excuse Councilman Kow, who is on a family vacation.
Thank you very much. A motion to excuse Councilman Kow. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mills. Any discussion or question on the motion, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. At this time, we have approval of minutes. May I have a motion, please, for the February 19, 2015, special session, which was a joint session with Xenia Planning and Zoning Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Smith. Second, please.
Second.
Second by the Vice President. Any discussion or question on these minutes, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Now a motion, please, for the February 24, 2015, special and executive session.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Mills. Second, please.
Second.
Second by Councilman Smith. Any discussion or question on these minutes, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Abstained.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
And finally, a motion, please, for the February 26, 2015, regular, excuse me, regular session.
So moved, Mr. President.
Moved by Councilman Lauterback. Second, please.
Second.
Second by the mayor, by a no's. Any discussion or question on these minutes, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. At this time, we have an opportunity for audience comments. If anyone would care to come and address the Xenia City Council, please feel free to do so. Step to the podium, provide us your name and address, limit your comments to two to three minutes, please. And just a note, as we have and have been advising at our most recent meetings, this will be a time for addressing council, will not be necessarily a time for discussion back and forth amongst council.
Most of you know me as that. I won't even give you my real name, or most of you wouldn't even know me. I've been involved with the Xenia YRC for...
Sir, your address, please.
Pardon?
Sir, your address, please.
1951 Commonwealth Drive.
Thank you.
I've been involved with the Xenia YRC for over 33 years. I've been involved with kids here in Xenia for over 38. I've kept the youth girls softball program going for over 25 years. I meet with a lot of parents. We have 400 to 600 kids out there. I'm here to give my thoughts on the Family Entertainment Center. I think from what I saw in the previous pre-meeting you had and what you've gone with the family centers, this would be great. Everything I've seen so far is great, but the council is going to have to stand behind it. I know personally, from the baseball and softball point of view, the city dropped youth baseball back in the early '70s. They dropped T-ball and coach pitch in the early '90s. They came to me to pick it up because I was the president of YRC. If I wouldn't have picked it up, kids from six to eight years of age would have had no place to play in Xenia. And then later on, if you want to get more, they dropped the adult softball program, tried to get me to revitalize it. I took that over, got it partially started, and then Cedarville and Beaver Creek started opening up their facilities out there, and everybody went to them. The adult softball was really going great in Xenia, and the city let it slip through its fingers. This was one of the main hubs for adult softball back in the '60s and '70s. The main people I think the council needs to worry about is the kids and the young parents in town. They're the ones that's going to either stay or leave. The people my age, your age, that's here, they're going to stay here. I'm a lifelong resident of Xenia, and I'll be here till I die, probably. But I really believe that this family entertainment center up here would have a great shot of making it. Needs the backing from the council, needs the backing from the city. I think a few things could be changed in it. I think some things could be added, but that's not up to me. I would have a say-so in it. Also, I'd like to mention, if you guys would like any help in the development of different fields, these new complexes you're talking about, I would appreciate the call, and I would volunteer my time to be involved with it. I want to thank you.
Would anyone else care to come and address the Xenia City Council this evening, please? Seeing none, we'll move to reports of committees. Councilwoman Mills, please. Board for Recreation, Arts, and Cultural Activities.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bracka's last meeting, we discussed all the upcoming events that is happening in our city. We are very excited to be able to offer six music ventures, three movies. We also have the garden spots, the adoptive spot, and we also are offering many opportunities within our community with Fishing Derby and...I don't have my notes in front of me, I'm sorry. So we just are very excited about all the upcoming things. We are now between here to Christmas, with Hometown Christmas, and looking and starting to plan with that, too. So it's a great time to be here, and we hope that everybody will come out and support what we offer and is at Shawnee Park, and that's about all I have.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Councilwoman Mills and Bracka, please?
I have one.
Please.
I know that Easter egg, community Easter egg hunt is coming up on Saturday, April 4th. Is there any special needs for that?
If anyone would like to donate a basket, we would love to do that. And donating a basket can be done in three different ways. You can donate a completely prepared basket. You know, if you would like to purchase one at a store or create one yourself, we would greatly appreciate it. A second way is if you just like to go shopping and buy items, if you want to donate items, someone will assemble it for you. And if you do not like to shop at all, and we'd just like to donate money towards having the baskets. But we have 2,000 children in attendance for the Easter egg hunt, and it's astronomical to see all those little cherubs and little faces out at Shawnee Park with their little baskets and bags, all excited to go Easter egg hunt, and it happens in a half an hour and it's done. It's amazing. But in the end, we have all the families come, and they stand in the pavilion, and each child will get a ticket, and then a ticket is dropped in the box of their age bracket, and then we draw out the tickets and hand out these baskets. And some of these kids, it might be the only basket they might get this Easter. And so it's so important. And so if you are able to share, and as they say, pass it forward, and many other things, a kindness act, please, you know, consider that. You are welcome to drop off the baskets at City Hall, and they will have them kept for us in the council chambers office. And we always try to have anywhere from 30 to 40 baskets, but we have had up to 70 baskets. And the more baskets we have, more children are blessed. So if you are able to do that, we would appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
I'm assuming the Easter bunnies want to be there, isn't she?
Yes, absolutely. Bring your own camera, which most people have the cell phone cameras, but Easter bunnies want to be here. We're asking that the police and fire department make their presence there, too, during that time, and it's a great time. The kids get so excited for that, too.
Thank you. Anything else for Councilwoman Mills, please, and Bracka? Seeing none, Councilman Smith, Traffic Commission, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Xenia City Traffic Commission met on Monday, March 2, at 7:00 here in council chambers. On the agenda that night, we welcomed our newest traffic member, Jeff Ott, to City Traffic Commission. Jeff is a resident here in Xenia and also has in-depth knowledge of our streets. He works for Green County Engineering Department. We also elected Sarah Mays this year as our vice chair for Xenia City Traffic Commission. We had one member absent, and basically on the agenda item was just the discussion of the police and accident report from Xenia Police Department that was presented by Sergeant Chris Stutes, and we just, basically, just went over some issues there. And that is all. Our next traffic meeting is slated for Monday, April 6.
Thank you very much. Anything for Councilman Smith and Traffic Commission, please? Seeing none, Mayor Bayless, Board of Zoning Appeals.
Thank you. The Board of Zoning Appeals met on February 23. There were just two items, and both were approved. The first was conditional use request to allow welding and fabrication business to be located at 1031 Cincinnati Avenue, and this was filed by Ray McIntyre at 1521 Kingsway Drive in Beaver Creek. And then the second was a variance request to allow a proposed outdoor storage facility without meeting the requirement for a pay parking lot to be located on Industrial Boulevard, Lot 6, filed by property owner Ryan Howard of Howard Companies.
Thank you very much. Anything for Mayor Bayless and the Board of Zoning Appeals, please? Seeing none, moving to items from city council and mayor. Are there any items that need to be brought forward this evening, please?
Just a couple of quick ones. I know it's unfortunately tornado season's coming up. Mr. City Manager, can you tell people where we have facilities, safe facilities they can go to?
Absolutely. During daytime business hours, several of our city's facilities, in case of emergency, can be provided. The Public Service Center on Tyler Road does have a tornado shelter here in City Hall. The Xenia Adult Recreation Center, it does have a tornado facility and our fire stations in the event that you have nowhere else to go. We always advise and stress, however, that your best option, you know, even best warnings are usually five to 10 minutes, so your best option is to shelter in place, particularly, for example, out at the service center. That is really designed for folks visiting the park, so we do not advise anyone to get in their car, leave their home, and go to that shelter. But certainly the city facilities that I've mentioned are locations where, during business hours, during normal business hours, where we would be open and available to help shelter people.
There's a lot of baseball games at West Side. Who is, would open the facilities? Should there be after hours, should there be a tornado warning kids out on the baseball diamonds?
During after hours, we do have a system in place where we will try to get our closest police officer out there to the facility. One of the things we have talked about long-term is a digital security system out there that would allow us to open that remotely. That is not available today. So anyone who's out there has to bear in mind that our closest unit will respond there to open it up, but their response time will vary based on the location that they're at given the emergency want to occur. So again, if there are folks out there, they can certainly seek that as an option, but we strongly urge people not get in their car and try to travel to that location.
One quick thing, the job offices in the city of Xenia, I think they're, what is their, finance clerk, communications operator, anything else? And the public watching, how do they apply for these jobs?
Applications are available at City Hall and our, at our front desk on the first floor, and information is available online as well. There's still several positions, I believe, that are available. Seasonal maintenance, I think the finance clerk is still up, a couple others. So again, we encourage you to get strong candidates to provide services to our citizens. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, please?
I just have a quick question. I know we inherited, it seems like, the second worst winter last year, I think, was the worst in a long time, and I appreciate the job that the street crews are doing, and I know it's been really hard on our streets. How are we doing on our salt supply? Are we looking okay for that?
Yeah, salt's pretty good. Pot holes are another story. We definitely encourage folks, if they have specific pot holes to report, to contact our Engineering Public Service Office at 376-7264 or 372, 376-7265. I have a number that'll get you to the staff out there who can document that and get it taken care of. Once the weather has probably broken a little bit more than it has today, we'll have crews out on a daily basis to work on those, and of course, we do have our street program that will start later this summer.
Okay. And the other thing I was asked to bring up, we have a new food truck in town that's a potential new restaurant, the One Bistro. Can somebody who knows more about that bring that up tonight? Can we talk about that?
I can talk about it a little bit right now.
Were you planning on doing it anyway?
In fact, I ate over at One Bistro this afternoon. It's very, very good food. One Bistro is an outreach ministry utilizing the Pay It Forward concept. Currently, they are operating on Thursdays from 11 to 2:00 out of the Toward Independence location. So they have a food truck, a fully equipped food truck outside that's licensed to, you know, to deliver, to prepare food. The food is delivered to folks inside, and Toward Independence provides accommodations indoors. They are, they, One Bistro, in partnership with Toward Independence, are in final stages of planning rehabilitation of 807 East Main, which is the adjoining facility to Toward Independence that they own. That will prospectively be the actual restaurant location for Toward Independence, or, excuse me, for One Bistro. And they're looking at, I don't have a good date, in fact, I was talking with the folks over there today, but they're looking at probably May to June before they have their restaurant facility open. And as I mentioned, it is a Pay It Forward concept. You will find excellent, excellent, high-quality food with high-quality ingredients, very reasonably priced. It's a suggested donation. Any proceeds or profits go into providing meals for less fortunate, for hungry people. So people are encouraged to pay additional if they can afford to do so. Anyone in the community who has nothing to eat can come to One Bistro, and they'll ask you to do a little bit of work, maybe wait some tables or do some dishes, but they will provide free of charge meals for folks. So this is a tremendous opportunity to help meet some critical needs in our community and at the same time, provide a great venue for dining in our community, and we look forward to welcoming them to full business sometime, probably early summer this year.
And I'd like to tack on that the food is not the regular hamburgers. We're talking very much gourmet food. They have four or five sandwiches, pizza.
Fine salads.
Great salads.
Great salads and soups. So it is not just a food truck that you're going to get hot dogs. I mean, you're getting gourmet food, so I just wanted to add that.
Their venue will also include a coffee shop and bakery.
Two cup.
Yeah. Yes, thank you. And again, fantastic. We bought pizza crusts, muffins, and cupcakes there today, my wife and I, and so much for the diet. But again, you know, it's a tremendous addition to our downtown. We're very, very happy to invite them, and of course, Haha Pizza did their soft opening this week as well, so we're very excited about that, too.
And along with that, I did attend a press conference this morning at 10:00. We were on the news on Channel 7, but the 100 Women, 100 Green County Women's Organization donated $10,000 to One Bistro. So, yeah, so that was really great for them, and, I mean, they're just elated. And then, as I was saying, the addition to the pastries, I think it's called two cup, and that's kind of giving back, too. It stands for something, one cup for something, kind of giving back. But along with that, they, I learned today that they work with backpack food programs for schools. And so I already told Councilwoman Mills about it, who works directly with our Ex-Out Hunger, and so they're going to connect, too, so they'll be doing some things with that as well.
Mr. President, I would just also mention that about 90% of all of the services provided at One Bistro are volunteer. So they really want to encourage local churches or service groups who have an interest in providing opportunities, you know, to give back. You know, they have a whole host of needs in terms of service in their operation, and again, it's just a great opportunity for folks to come out and serve their community, and so they'll be looking for additional folks to volunteer as they look to open up their permanent location.
Excellent observation. Is there a way that we in the city can help them get that message out even wider than just airing it at this evening's meeting?
Yep. We will certainly be working with them when they look at their opening. We'll be using all of our platforms to help broadcast that opening, and again, anyone who has interest and wants to get in contact with One Bistro can contact my office at 376-7231, and we will put them in touch with the folks at One Bistro.
Excellent. Thank you. And I would give a shout out to the opening of Haha Pizza. My wife and I just happened to see them open on Tuesday. We stopped by. It was an exceptional pizza and a great salad as well. Their menu items are a little scant at the moment because they're just opening, but what they have is truly excellent, and if you've not had a Haha Pizza, you definitely need to give it a try. Anything else, please? Seeing none, reports of city offices. Back to you, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President, Council. Four items this evening. First is a recommendation to introduce a resolution amending Appendix 2 of the Employee Benefits Manual to increase the minimum midpoint and maximum wage ranges for each pay grade except the minimum of pay grade 1, which will remain at the minimum wage rate set forth by the state and federal law. An adjustment to that minimum wage was approved by city council earlier this year. From 2007 through 2008, the city undertook a major project to modernize and restructure a compensation plan. As approved, the compensation plan called for regular updates to ensure that the work and expense put into that plan update would be lasting. Recommended adjustment this year, a 2% increase is based on the consumer price index for 2014, which is 1.6%, bearing in mind that the CPI does not take into consideration food or fuel expenses. These recommended wage range modifications essentially provide, as provided, will adjust to react to inflationary factors affecting our local economy.
Thank you very much. May I have an introduction of the resolution, please?
So introduced, Mr. President.
Introduced by Councilman Lauterback. Thank you very much.
Next this evening, annually, staff solicits competitive bids for a plethora of materials and supplies related to our water and sewer maintenance services. Once received, staff reviews all submitted bids to determine the lowest individual item prices and then recommends awards of bids amongst the vendors based on the lowest bids for the individual items. The results of that review are before you tonight. Staff is therefore recommending council approve the award of bid to Ferguson Waterworks, EJ Prescott, Buckeye State Pipe, Utility Sales Agency, NINA Foundry, and HD Supply for their respective low bids for water distribution and sewer collection supplies for 2015.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion, please, to approve the bid? Bid?
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Mills. Second, please.
Second.
Second by the mayor. Any discussion or question on this motion, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Next this evening, staff is requesting a motion to reject all bids received at the February 24, 2015, bid opening for the roof replacement project at the Public Service Center City Garage Building on Tyler Road. Based on internal review of the bids and discussion with bidders, staff is not satisfied that our specifications were adequately developed to ensure the best and most cost-effective outcome for the project. Engineering and staff will seek additional consultation as new specifications are developed, and another bidding process will be undertaken at a later date this year.
Thank you. May I have a motion to reject all the bids, please?
So moved, Mr. President.
Moved by Councilman Lauterback. Second, please.
Second.
Second by the Vice President. Any discussion or question on this motion, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Finally, this evening, staff is recommending city council approve all of the recommended actions presented by the Green County Tax and Senate Review Committee and direct that the OES annual report be forwarded to the Green County Board of Commissioners for their consideration. The TIRC recommended only two continuing actions, which are continuation of a 50% abatement of applicable real property taxes for Lowe's Home Center Incorporated, continuation of a, and second, a continuation of 36% abatement of applicable real property taxes for the SAS Automation LLC, which is under Agreement 1 with SAS.
May I have a motion, please, to accept and approve all the motions of the TIRC? So moved. Moved by the Vice President. Second, please.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mills, by a no's. Any discussion or question on this motion, please? Seeing none, roll call, please?
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Just one additional item to bring up with council this night, and sort of piggybacking off of Councilman Lauterback's previous comment or questions about tornado shelters. Our first tornado siren test of the year occurred last week, and there was some media coverage because the initial attempt in dispatch to initiate the sirens did not initiate the sirens, and this is exactly why we do tests. We're able, within seconds, basically, to initiate the sirens, and I just wanted to point out to council and public that we have protocol in place that if for some reason we can't launch those from the convenience of the dispatch center, that our public safety units, our fire chiefs, have the ability to promote, launch those, which is exactly what happened, and so we were able to literally respond within about five seconds. So again, you know, we test these on a regular basis, monthly through the year, and we do it for a very good reason so that when we do need them, that we're assured that they're operational. So we have completed that, and the issue that was created due to some of the changes in the dispatch that caused that the sirens not to go off has been addressed this week. We've pre-tested, and they're functioning. Also want to mention that I think probably for the first time since I've been with the city, uh, staff conducted fire drill, um, this week, um, successful, or excuse me, a tornado drill successfully this week. Um, so appreciate, uh, the cooperation of any of the public who might have been here, uh, early on Tuesday morning, um, as we did the, uh, as we did the test. So again, I just wanted to make sure the council's aware that we're keeping public safety top of mind.
Thank you very much.
I mean, I just add that it was really nice to receive a phone call alerting us that this would occur, the test, because it was on an off day.
Yeah. And again, you know, I, in the state, I think statewide, uh, the test was pushed back.
Right.
It wasn't really supposed to be.
Thank you very much. Anything for the City Manager this evening, please? Seeing none, Mr. Finance Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, one item and then one announcement this evening. The first item I have is the schedule of bills and the amount of two hundred forty-seven thousand, eleven dollars and twelve cents.
May I have a motion, please, to pay our bills this evening?
So moved, Mr. President.
Moved by Councilman Lauterback. Second, please.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mills. Any discussion or question on the bills? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Uh, I am very happy to announce that the city has received an upgraded bond rating of double A minus on its two thousand and fifteen general obligation bonds. Uh, we received this rating earlier this week from Standard and Poor's. Uh, the rationale behind it was, uh, the city having very strong budgetary flexibility, uh, very strong liquidity, uh, very strong debt and contingent liability profile, uh, very strong management conditions with, uh, good financial policies and practices. Uh, they did note, however, that we are in a cycle of weak budgetary performance, as we all know, as most, a lot of cities are in the same boat. Uh, and it mentions a weak local economy, which we, obviously, we're trying to address and hope will be addressed in the future, but currently, uh, some of the things that we know will be positive in the future are, have yet to take place. So I'm, I'm very pleased with that, uh, upgraded rating considering, uh, you know, the financial conditions that we've all been through over the last five or six years, seven years with recession. I think it shows a lot of this council, uh, you know, prior councils, uh, management of all of city staff and the community as well, uh, and their willingness to step up in, in tough times and, and face the budgetary challenges that we all have. So just want to make that announcement. We will issue a press release on this tomorrow. Uh, also with that, we'll be issuing the, the name of the, and the number, uh, to contact, uh, for anybody interested in purchasing the bonds. And the plan right now is to sell and issue the bonds next Thursday, March nineteenth. So we will put that into the press release.
Thank you very much. Anything for the Finance Director this evening, please? Councilman.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
The bond, you know what percent that'll be paid, or?
Well, that'll be based on market conditions. Um, you know, obviously, things have gone up a little bit recently, and that was some of the concern with trying to move forward as quickly as possible. We don't know when those rate increases are going to happen. So, you know, we're hoping that, you know, what we've presented in the past will be somewhere in, in the ballpark of what the, you know, that three and a half percent combined.
Three and a half.
Somewhere in that range, but, you know, obviously, conditions will dictate, but somewhere in that neighborhood.
Thank you.
Congratulations on the bond rate. Were we like a B minus, C, or? No, just kidding. What was the rating? Double, double, double A minus. Where we were before, it's, it's a one step up. We were at A-one before through Moody's, and this is a, you know, a different rating agency, but, uh, basically, it's going to double A. Double A rating with that caveat on the minus, given those, those particular issues that we need to address, which leads to the possibility, as those things get remedied, uh, in any future issue, that we might, uh, be able to get that double A. So I think that's very, very positive for the community.
Thank you very much. Anything else for the Finance Director, please? Seeing none, Mr. Law Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. One item this evening. Second reading of a resolution authorizing the city manager to give consent and cooperation with the Director of Transportation of the State of Ohio to complete improvements to the North Columbus Avenue, that's US forty-two, in East Church Street intersection, originally introduced by Mayor Bayless.
I'd like to move that it be accepted.
Thank you. We have a motion, please, a second.
Second.
Second by the Vice President. Any discussion or question on the motion, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
I have nothing further this evening.
Anything for the Law Director this evening, please? Seeing none, any updates to our summary of action items, Mr. City Manager?
Brief updates. Uh, on the second item, forwarded to the Law Director today for legal review, the, uh, changes to the, or updates to community funding guidelines, those will be coming back to council at your March twenty-sixth regular session. Uh, recommend third item probably is ready for removal. Uh, fourth item, uh, is in process. Have a meeting set to discuss that, uh, with the superintendent next week. And we are in the process currently of developing a MOU. In fact, just had a discussion on that today.
Thank you very much. So you would desire item three to be removed?
Yeah.
Pleasure of council. Please remove it. Any additions from my colleagues? Seeing none. Uh, reading of communications and discussion, Councilman Lauterback, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of items. I wanted to congratulate the Xenia High School Boys Basketball Team. They lost in the third round to, uh, Centerville, and, uh, they, they, they played a good game, but Centerville's got a top-notch team, so. But, uh, Xenia had a great, uh, season, and I believe, uh, Kent Anderson was named Coach of the Year, or Coach of his Division. But anyway, he won some award. Uh, also, I met with, uh, School Superintendent Denny Morrison this morning. We had a long conversation. Uh, I, I am very impressed with his fiscal responsibility. He, um, uh, the, the football project, no tax dollars involved. They've do, they've done some refinancing of bonds to save taxpayers money. Uh, I am really impressed with his, uh, again, his fiscal responsibility, and for that reason, I, uh, I will be supporting the two, uh, school levies on the May ballot. Uh, it's very much needed. It's probably twenty-five percent of their, uh, budget. So again, I'd like to go on record as, uh, supporting the tax levy in May. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, just a few things tonight. I, um, I'd like to start by thanking Joey Anatarra for doing our invocation tonight. I know she, like, drives kind of far to get here, and I appreciate that. And, and then I'd like to thank the audience for being here tonight and for Bear for, for speaking tonight. Um, we had a Xenia Youth Expo last Saturday. It was well-attended, um, put on at the Xenia Community Center. Um, I'd like to thank Councilman Josh Long for organizing that. I think this is your third year. Yeah. And, uh, that is just, uh, an opportunity for people to come and see some of the various organizations that we have here in Xenia, uh, to find some activities for kids to do. Um, one organization that we have that works really hard in the Xenia school system is the marching band and, and the band, and you probably were going to mention this tonight, I don't know. They have a, a chili cook-off and quarter auction, I believe, this Saturday, and that's at, the dinner's at five, auction's at seven, am I right?
I believe that's true.
Okay. Um, and Greg Sell wanted me to mention that tonight, so, um, and, uh, so that is, that was postponed. They had some bad weather in February, got canceled. I got rescheduled for the Saturday, the fourteenth, and that is at the Cafeteria, I believe, at Xenia High School.
Cafeteria.
Mm-hmm. And then I was, uh, also wanted to bring up, uh, an item that is next weekend, um, for those that are watching, um, a taped version of this council meeting. Um, that's on March twenty-first, March twenty-second, uh, four forty-one Leadbetter Road, um, First Church of Christ. Um, they're putting on, uh, their second annual Triumph to Traj, Triumph to Tragedy, um, weekend. They bring, um, First Church brings in speakers. Um, these are people that have, uh, not been down on their luck, but have faced physical, um, trauma and have really, um, grown in their spiritual relationship, um, and they're motivational speakers. Um, they, um, are people that are, really will get, uh, get you pumped up and appreciate what you have. Um, and that starts Saturday, um, at seven o'clock. Um, it is free. Um, there is, uh, tickets that are necessary for the event on Saturday because they think that they had close to six hundred and fifty, uh, people last year, um, and there's only seating for eight hundred, so they just want to make sure they don't have overcapacity. And then that carries on, um, Sunday morning and then Sunday evening with a concert. So you can visit their website, fccxenia.org, or you can call them at three seven two seven six eight seven. And, um, again, I'd just like to thank everybody for watching tonight and for, um, um, your support with our City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mills.
Thank you. I just wanted to bring up a few things that is happening here in Xenia. One of them is the Sixth Annual Spring Hustle, Healthy Families Five K Walk and Run. It's going to be held Saturday, March twenty-first at nine AM. Uh, if you want to go to the Xenia Y, registration begins at seven thirty, and there's going to be a Zumba warm-up, and the Kids Fun Run for Five Years and Younger at eight forty-five, and then the awards will be at ten o'clock. So if you have any questions, uh, please contact the YMCA or the Greene County Combined Health District, and they will be able to, um, fill you in on what you needed to know, but it's a fun time for everyone, and the weather is getting nice, so I hope everyone will go out and support our community and have a good time running or walking. Another, uh, interesting thing is we were talking about Ha Ha Pizza and, uh, One Bistro is that Sweet Boutique, that lovely little cupcake shop down the street, is also now having box lunches. So if you would like a box lunch, you will get a choice of sandwiches, uh, such as a chicken salad on croissant or a, uh, ham and cheese on rye type, and you get a choice of side dishes, which could be pasta, chips, or fruit salad, and then you get their yummy cookies. And, um, if you're interested, the lunches are available on Wednesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays, and if you'd like to preorder, have your whole company or anybody that would like to do it. And so if you want more information on that, contact Bridget at Sweet Boutique, and, um, their phone number is three seven two 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 four.
One item to add to that, I think, is, uh, that they also will deliver to, uh, large groups.
Okay. Well, very good. So please, uh, support our local businesses. That is something new in our town. Um, another thing that is coming up, and I'll be talking, uh, speaking a little more on that later, is Arbor Day. Um, that is going to be in April twenty-sixth, but this year, we're going to be replacing a heritage ash tree. I think it was, uh, one of the largest trees in our community. Unfortunately, the Emerald Ash Bore has attacked it, and it is dying. So at Franklin Park on Friday, April the twenty-sixth, they are going to be, uh, planting a new tree to replace that one. And when I say "they," is all the communities invited, but also, they have combined with Cox Schools, and so the fifth graders, first and fifth graders will be out there too to participate. So I think it'll be a great time to show the kids that we care about our community and, and the things that are in our community. Um, uh, the, coming up, our next movie will be held at Big Community, that is the indoor movie in the park location, and it's going to be Planes, Fire, and Rescue. And as we are looking at our local heroes, we want to, uh, the police officers and the firefighters will be there to greet the children at six thirty, and then the movie will start at seven. There's always free drinks and popcorns and a great time, and, um, it's a wonderful location for the movie. We use the same screen as the outdoor, and so it's, it's a great time. So it's, uh, free to the community, and we would really invite everyone to come and see Planes, Fire, and Rescue. And lastly, I just want to say, as the weather's warming up, I see more and more children playing outside as they need to be, so please be careful and watch out for them, because they don't always watch out for you.
Thank you very much. Mayor?
Thank you. Um, on Monday, I, I was invited to reception at Central State University, and that was followed the next day by my induction into the Achievement Hall of Fame. And I was very, very honored, uh, for that. Oh, thank you. Um, and another honoree was, who is called the distinguished honor, was Joshua I. Smith. He gave a million dollars to the university, and the building is named after him, so, and he deserved that.
How much did you give him?
Well, I wrote a check for a million, but it bounced. Then the following day, the City Manager, Assistant City Manager and I traveled back to Central State, um, where the City Manager gave an excellent presentation of the possible annexation of Central State, and it's the annexation of Central State, not the Wilberforce Community, just the university, uh, campus area. Uh, well, it was well-received and generated good questions, and this is in their process of, of, uh, deciding whether or not to annex. Um, I attended the Youth Expo at the Community Center. I had to split my time that day, um, but I was able to watch the different groups perform. And I'm especially, I think it was such a wonderful group of kids. They had a special needs group that performed, and I tell you, the other kids were so supportive, and it just really warmed my heart to see how they clapped and encouraged those kids and were so, so kind. So that was just worth my whole time there, I think. But kudos to our Vice President Long and his wife, who worked extremely hard in preparation for the event. Uh, there were prizes and giveaways, and the grand prize was a tablet. I waited for my call, but I didn't get it. But it was a wonderful event, and also Councilman Smith, who had a booth, uh, there, and just everyone who really gave their time that day. It was really great. And then the On the Road Players at XACT, where our own President was one of the main characters, and he's always so good. Um, yeah, he is a character. Uh, I wasn't able to participate this time, but it was fun just to go there and watch him perform, as well as our own Mary Crocker, the Community Development Director. They were excellent.
Mary was excellent as Lucy.
Yes, Lucy. Mm-hmm. Um, let's see what else, and this doesn't, this is part of my list. I'm just, uh, this afternoon, uh, at three o'clock, the National Afro-American Museum had a tribute to the hundred fifty-first birthday of Colonel Charles Young, and because they paid my way, well, not the museum, but the National Park Systems paid my way in two thousand twelve, just to go to Washington, flew me to Washington to represent the, um, Colonel Young home in its, um, declaration, a proclamation given by President Obama as a national monument. So they asked me to come back today, just to say a few words about that, and it was very well-attended. Um, and one of the things that these national monuments are facing now, this, in nineteen oh six, President Roosevelt, uh, declared that we would have national monuments and this, it, the areas would be protected, and that was the Antiquities Act. Well, now, a hundred and nine years later, they're trying to take that away, and it allowed any president to, to name, uh, places to be national monuments. And when I flew up there, I was with a group of about ten to twelve people from all over the country, mainly from the West, and a lot of them depend on, the only way they can exist is with tourists. Excuse me. And so, it's so important for them, so this really, um, makes it bad now that they're trying to get rid of this, so it can't be, they can't be declared national anymore. My voice is running out, but anyway, maybe I'll stop. Thank you.
On that thought, Mayor, uh, would you recommend to, uh, anyone who has a similar concern about that, please write your federal, uh, representatives, Congressman Turner is the local representative here, as well as our two state senators, uh, with your opinion on that, to, uh, make your voice heard in Washington, DC?
Great.
And I just want everyone to know, our, our mayor is, uh, she's just fabulous. Of course, she represents us so well. She is the President of the Dayton Area Mayors and Managers. Uh, I, I don't think we could have a better ambassador for the city, just that she runs out of voice because of all the things that she does is a testament to, uh, to what she does for our city. So thank you so much for, uh, for doing that.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice President?
Thank you. A couple items. One, I'd just like to congratulate our Xenia Community School Board for their achievements. They, they were awarded some, um, I don't know the exact name of the award this week from the Regional School Board Association, and individually to Dr. Paul Dillaplane for his twenty years of service on our, our Xenia Community School Board, so congratulations to them. Um, I, too, would like to show my support. I'm, I'm proud to be a part of the, the committee that's helping to, um, get the, the levy committee get the word out about the Xenia School, uh, renewal levies in May. If you'd like more information about what that levy is and how it helps to pay for schools, you can go to, uh, supportxensiaschools.com, and, um, we have a website there put together where you can, um, get a yard sign and, and learn about the facts about the, uh, that those renewal levies. Um, two other things. One, um, I'd like to thank everyone who attended the Youth Expo. I'd like to say it was a good year. It wasn't our best year. Uh, our first two years had some really good attendance. Um, I'm happy to say, though, that the only reason our groups couldn't attend is because they were busy providing activities for youth to do, so it's a good reason not to come to the Expo if you're out providing activities for youth to do. So we'll, uh, we're looking forward to come back next year to the Xenia Community Center. Um, I got a lot of questions there, um, about the school levy, which we're able to answer, about the entertainment venue, um, Town Square, and I just reassure people that, uh, that our City Manager and our Economic Development Department is representing the city in those matters, and they and the rest of this council support those efforts, um, and we look forward[1627.32] they and the rest of this council support those efforts, and we look forward to hopefully getting that to a settled conclusion soon. The other thing was about parks. We got a lot of questions about parks, and before the cameras came on, we did hear a presentation tonight about some of the great things and plans we have in place for the parks. So I'm sure there'll be lots of press releases and community forums coming up about those. Other than that, I'd just like to personally thank my wife to help with at Expo. She does the majority of the work while I'm at work. So thank you, honey.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just piggybacking on the idea of the school levies, the big underlying thing that I know every taxpayer wants to know, and it's actually on Vice President's cell phone here right now, just the image, no new taxes. These are renewals. Your tax base will not increase as a result of your support for your Xenia schools. They continue to advance and excel in their delivery of excellence for our students. Please support them. I just have one other additional item to add this evening. Thank you so much to the mayor for mentioning last week's performances at XACT. That is a purely fundraising event for them. They choose very simple things to be done so that there's very little overhead cost, and that helps keep your essentially 503-type organization as the XACT going through the year. The other item would be at XACT this weekend, I believe tomorrow night at 7:00 p.m., there will be a Magic and Illusions Festival instead of presentations. Please come and do that.